Dear heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the city in which we live. Guide us this evening as we make our decisions in Christ's name. Amen. As a matter of decorum for this group, if the gentlemen in the room who have on hats will remove them, I would appreciate that very much. Thank you. The reading of the minutes, the first item on the agenda today, the minutes from the regular meeting of October the 10th, 2023, I'll entertain a motion to adopt those minutes.
So moved.
Second. Motion second, we adopt the minutes as presented in the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. You also have the minutes of the work session on October the 10th, 2023 before you, I'll entertain a motion or a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the minutes in the work session of October the 10th, 2023 as presented in the discussion. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. Let me ask Mr. Jenkins to introduce our four members of the Noonan Youth Council who are with us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have members of the Noonan Youth Council with us this evening. They have to attend one meeting each year at each student and then go back and report to their group what happened, so they will have a very interesting one tonight. So we have with us Brayden Williamson, sophomore, Noonan High School, you stand. Francesca Parker, sophomore, Noonan High. Macy Horn, senior, Noonan High. And Sarah Hayes Grody, senior, Noonan High. Thank you for joining us today.
Also having an introduction tonight, we often have members of Boy Scout groups come to our meetings to satisfy particular badges that they are trying to achieve in Boy Scouts. Tonight we have Jack Landry from 2057, lives up in Palmetto, and he's got a good merit badge for tonight. The merit badge is in communication, so welcome, glad you're here. Thank you, and good luck on the way through. Next item on the agenda tonight, reports from boards and commissions, we have some appointments. The first appointment is Ms. Jenkins to the Convention Center Authority.
I'd like to reappoint Carla Stinson.
Second.
Motion is second, we reappoint Carla Stinson to the Convention Center Authority. Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. It's my understanding that the next three appointments need to be put on our next agenda, if you'll do that, Mr. Phillips.
Service, Mayor.
I appreciate that. Mr. Phillips, do you have anything this evening?
I do not.
I don't have anything this evening. Under new business, the first item is a public hearing. This is a request by the owner to demolish a structure located at 169 West Washington Street. Mr. Stevenson, how are you this evening?
Good, Mayor, how are you?
Good.
Mayor and council. Yes, before you is the request to demolish this property is located at 169 West Washington Street. I can report that it is not in a historical district in the city of Noonan, and the applicant has complied with the advertising as required by our ordinance.
This is a public hearing on this issue of the request for the demolition of property located at 169 West Washington Street, and I would give the opportunity for anyone to come forward at this time who would like to speak in favor or against the demolition of the property at 169 West Washington Street. Seeing no one come forward, I'm going to close the public hearing at this time and ask for a motion from the council.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we grant the request for demolition of the property located at 169 West Washington Street. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next is a consideration to adopt the municipal probation services ordinance. Blankenship, how are you?
Hey, I'm doing well.
Good.
The nice mayor, Mr. Mayor and council. I am here tonight, consideration to adopt the municipal probation services ordinance, establishing the in-house probation department that'll service Noonan Municipal Court. Asking for your consideration.
We have it before us, are there any questions? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the ordinance as presented. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Under unfinished business tonight, Mr. Cole has the adoption of a revised annual financial report for the 2022 capital improvements element, the CIE update. Mr. Cole, how are you, sir?
I'm doing well, thank you, Mayor and council. On September 27th, 2022, council adopted the 2022 update to the capital improvements element. In preparing this year's CIE update, it was discovered that there was an error which resulted in last year's ending impact fee of fund balance and this year's beginning impact fee fund balance not matching. Therefore, the Georgia Department of Community Affairs is requiring the city to update the previous financial report prior to adopting this year's version, which is the next agenda item. This will make the financial report consistent with a completed 2022 audit. And you will find the one-page corrected report in your packet. Thank you.
Any questions, Mr. Cole? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve as presented the adoption of the revised annual financial report for the 2022 capital improvements element. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Cole, you're still up?
Yes, sir. Next, I would like to ask you to consider adopting the 2023 update to the capital improvements element, which includes the short-term work program, and of course, we've already had a public hearing on this, so I would ask you for your adoption.
Any questions, Mr. Cole?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we adopt the resolution as presented. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
The next is a consideration of the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Noonan and the Noonan Urban Redevelopment Agency regarding the ARPA Murray Street Workforce Housing Project. Ms. Donovan, how are you?
Doing well, thank you very much.
Good.
As you recall, back in May of 2022, council voted to award Nura $1.75 million to build seven houses on Murray Street. Essentially, this is the intergovernmental agreement. It's coming before you, it pretty much sets out the purposes, terms of the project, and the obligations of the two parties.
Any questions, Ms. Donovan, regarding the intergovernmental agreement? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, we approve the intergovernmental agreement between the city of Noonan and Nura as presented. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those like sign, motion carry. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the annexation, and I am going to recuse myself from this item this evening, and because my family has a direct connection with the property owner, and I believe Mr. DeBeau has an announcement regarding.
Yes, I would like to recuse myself from family connection.
All right, thank you very much. Mayor Pro Tim Corretko will handle the rest of the meeting.
Before you.
I'll sign two things first, sorry.
All right, good evening. This is a public hearing, this will be a public hearing for the annexation request. Annex 2022, tax 06, 163.61 acres located off Green Top Road, tax parcel number 0855086001, 0855107002, 0855086003, and the southern portion of 0855107003.
Can I get you to speak up a little bit?
Pardon?
Can I get you to speak up a little bit?
That will be, that will work, yes. All right, Ms. Donovan, you have the first part of this with a staff report.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Before I begin, though, I do want you to know that I put in front of you all a constitutional challenge letter that we received, typical with rezonings that come into play, so we did put that in front of you all so that you would have that as well, since we made it a part of the file. So essentially, this is a request by George Rosenzweig on behalf of Polte Group Home Company LLC and Green Top Road LLC to annex and zone 163.61 plus or minus acres, and it's located off Green Top Road, and the purpose of this request is to develop 300 single-family lots. The petitioner is proposing a density of 2.05 units per acre, a minimum lot size of 8,200 square feet, and an average lot size of 11,100 square feet. The minimum floor area has been proposed at 1,600 square feet with average square footages for the traditional pod, their 121 being 2,640 square feet, ranch pods 65 at 1,860 square feet, and estate pod, 106 homes, which is 3,004 square feet. Amenities will include a pool, clubhouse, pickleball complex, playground, a dog park, and walk-in trails throughout the development. In addition, there will be three to four different floor plans, with each plan having three to four different elevations and color combinations. Sell prices are going to range from 392 to 150 to 527,190. I do believe at the work session, though, they did indicate that those had gone up a little bit. Since this is an annexation, the county was notified in accordance with state law, and the county did object to this annexation. As a result, the development went into an arbitration panel, and 26 conditions have been placed on this development. Those conditions have been recorded, they're in effect for a two-year period, and that begins February of 2025. A list of those conditions has been included in your assessment, so I'm not going to read that 26 items. It should be noted that this property was considered for annexation in 2015, and that was ultimately denied by the city council. So as with all rezonings, we complete an assessment of each of the required standards, so I'm going to give you a quick summary of each. These tracts are primarily surrounded by vacant residential zone property and residential uses, so in terms of zoning designations, all the tracts in the county are zoned RC, which is a rural conservation, with one nearby tract to the south zoned M Industrial. Stony Oak subdivision is within the city limits, and it's zoned PDR, which is planned residential development, that is what the request is here. The county's RC zoning allows .625 units per acre. Stony Oak, which is a zoned PDR and backs up to this development, is permitted to have a density of 4.18 units per acre, and again, the proposed project would have an overall density of 2.05 units per acre. And staff felt the proposed use would be suitable in view of zoning and development of adjacent nearby properties, since the proposed use would be in keeping with existing and proposed future uses of the adjacent properties that are there. Although the RC zoning designation does allow only six, or .625 units per acre, Heritage Hills, which lies to the west of the property, doesn't meet that requirement, nor does the majority of residential lots across Green Top to the north. In addition, the proposed density is roughly half of what was approved for Stony Oak, and the proposed minimum lot size is almost twice as large as that development as well. Will the proposed use have an adverse impact on adjacent or nearby property? The greatest impact with this development will be traffic. Per the traffic study, the development at full buildout in 2028 will generate roughly 3,430 new trips per day. It is anticipated there will be 265 additional trips at AM peak hour and 353 additional trips at PM peak hour. Now, that is, we do need to note that that figure was based on development having 366 units, that has since come down to 360, so those numbers should decrease by roughly 18%. I did want to point that out. The study did indicate that the roundabout intersection at US 29 and Howell Jones Road would see an increased delay of eight seconds along the southbound approach during PM peak hour, changing that level of service from D to E. The study suggested installing a southbound right-turn bypass lane, which the consultant believes would improve the level of service from E to C. As part of the arbitration process, the applicant is required to contribute a five-year bond in the amount of $500,000 to assist with the implementation of the intersection improvement project on Howell Jones Road, Green Top Road at US 29, and to contribute a five-year bond in the amount of $250,000 to assist with implementation of intersectional improvements at Green Top and Herring Roads. These, however, are not under the city's jurisdiction, so I do want to point out that the county would be responsible for these improvements when and when they're made. Could it be used as currently zoned? The property is zoned in RC in the county, which would allow 101 lots on 163 acres. The density would be less than many of the neighboring properties. The staff feels there is room to increase this density on the site, given the amount of acreage and the fact that these lots would be served by sewer. Would the project cause an excess or more burdensome use of public facilities? Staff has already mentioned the impact of Howell Jones Road and US 29 roundabout, and the engineering department has provided comments that address the internal streets, proposed subdivision entrances on Green Top, and the raised median requested by the county. In terms of police services, Chief Blankenship has indicated that he believes two additional officers would be needed. Chief Brown has indicated that they can serve the development, but he did express concern about increased call times that may require additional equipment and manpower in the future. Terms of water and sewer, Scott Tolar with Noonan Utilities did review the project and indicated Noonan Utilities does have ample capacity to serve the project. Ronnie Chee, the Coweta County School System, indicated that the school capacity is an ongoing concern, and provided current enrollment figures showing building utilization of the schools serving that area. Staff did conduct a physical impact analysis of impact on as far as revenues and expenditures. Per our calculation, based on the 2023 budget, the anticipated annual expenditures would be $249,802. The anticipated annual revenues would be $255,696, and the projected upfront revenues, which is like impact fees, permits, inspections, and so forth, would be $843,243. In terms of the comprehensive plan, these properties are outside of the city limits, and therefore would not be considered in the city's comprehensive plan. However, the county's comprehensive plan does show this area as priority development character area on its current future land use map. In November of 2021, this same project was considered for rezoning by the Coweta County Commission. In their rezoning assessment, the county staff did write that the rezoning would be consistent with both the comprehensive plan and their comprehensive plan's growth strategy. Is the proposed use consistent with the purpose and intent of the proposed zoning district? PDR does allow residential development in a manner that basically advocates innovation of design and layout throughout the specific plan, which is a condition of zoning. In this case, the applicant has provided a concept plan with a mixture of residential uses, open space, and development requirements, as well as a variety of housing elevations and specific amenities, so therefore, we felt it would be consistent with PDR. Would the proposed use be supported by newer changing conditions? Not anticipated in the comprehensive plan. Again, the subject tract wasn't included in our comprehensive plan, but the adjacent tracts within the city limits are shown as future planned development. It brought into the city limits, we feel that the properties would most likely be shown as planned development as well, based on the city's proposed future land use definitions. In addition, the county updated their comprehensive plan, including their future development map, and showed this area as priority development character area, and they indicated that this character area intends to channel growth pressure to suitable areas in terms of compact land use patterns and infrastructure investment. Does the proposed use reflect a reasonable balance between the promotion of the public health, safety, morality, or general welfare, and the right to unrestricted use of property? Although the density would be greater than the majority of subdivisions in the area, it is still less than the density previously approved for Stony Oak. Also, many of the neighboring residential tracts have smaller lots than the current RC zoning allows. In addition, the applicant is proffering a 25-foot buffer around the perimeter of the property, which will provide additional screening for future developments. They've also proffered a 50-foot planted buffer along the entire front edge of Green Top Road, except at the entrances. The greatest impact will be traffic, however, the applicant will be required to contribute bonds in the amount of $750,000 to cover the cost of transportation improvements. Police and fire will also see impact, but that is true with any new residential development that comes in the city. The school board will see an increase in the number of students being added to the system, so the developer will need to work with the school board to ensure those students are accounted for in the future planning. And although the project will have impact on traffic and some areas of service provision, it does appear to be a quality development. In addition, the developer is being required to help mitigate the traffic concerns, and is willing to proper conditions for elevations, including limitation on materials and diversity of product. So in summary, staff found the development sitting at six of the eight standards. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on September 12 and voted six to nothing to recommend denial of the request. However, should the council decide to recommend approval of the request, staff suggests the following conditions. Number one, that the project would be consistent with the concept plan, density, project data, amenities, including a pickleball complex, and elevations provided as part of the application. The average square footages for each shall be as follows. Ranch pod, 1,860 square feet. Traditional pod, 2,640 square feet. Estate pod, 3,004 square feet. And number three, the city of Noonan will not issue a permit for land serving activities until such time as Coweta County has reviewed and approved the plans for the development to the extent that Coweta County has jurisdiction, and that's primarily relating to street connections to Green Top Road. In addition to those three, the council can also consider the 26 conditions from the arbitration process, as well as the conditions proffered by the applicant, and that's the report of the planning commission.
Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Just to make sure that we are, this, the public, I have opened the public hearing, this is a public hearing at this point. I am going to let you know that the decorum of our meetings is based on civility and respect. Accordingly, no emotional show of support or opposition during the hearing will be allowed. All staff have made their reports. After that, now I'm going to allow 15 minutes for the applicant to give their presentation, and then the opposition 15 minutes as well. That's a total of 15 minutes each. City staff will keep the time clock and report the two-minute warning. The clock will be turned off during questions and answers from council. So at this time, for the applicant.
Good evening. I'm George Rosenzweig, 75 Jackson Street, Noonan. I'm the attorney for the applicant. Tonight... Tonight, we're requesting annexation of 163.61 acres on Green Top Road, and we're requesting that the annexed property be rezoned as PDR. We're requesting approvals based on the entire record in the case, the hearing tonight, and our constitutional rights letter. This application has already been through a very extensive arbitration trial process. It resulted in an extensive arbitration order that was affirmed in Superior Court. The arbitration order contained 26 conditions that apply to the property until February 9, 2025. Those conditions include such things as a limit to 300 units, and a requirement that we pay our fair share of infrastructure improvements based upon numbers that were presented by the county during the arbitration process. In addition, we've proffered as a special condition that even though these 26 conditions expire on February 9, 2025, they will apply to the development even after their expiration, except for the condition on sewer and water service. That will be provided after February 9, 2025 by Noonan Utilities. In addition, we accept tonight the three conditions that were proposed by staff during their comprehensive report. Here is our site plan, and to orient you, this is Green Top Road, 163.61 acres, over 55 acres of open space, 300 units, a density of 2.05 units per acre. By point of reference, the county land use plan that the commissioners recently adopted, and which was accepted by the Georgia Department of Community Affairs, proposes a density of up to four units per acre for this property. So we're about half of the county land use plan. In addition, the county has recently approved about 1,700 lots with similar site plans and similar sizes out in the county that are restricted to over 55 property owners. And by way of further reference, the county not too long ago approved on Poplar Road a development about twice our size, having a density of 2.75 units per acre. Now, this development is not going to be another Poplar Road. There are some differences in this group tonight, but I think every one of us would agree that Poplar Road does not meet Noonan's standards. This development is going to be heavily buffered, heavily landscaped, lots and lots of open space, very little of any of the development's even going to be viewable from the road, unlike Poplar Road that doesn't have any birmingham, it doesn't have any buffering, and what you really see is naked boxes when you drive along the road. We have specific designs and colors and proffers and so forth to avoid the monotony of a development like Poplar Road. One of the things about this development, and one of the reasons that Polte is such a good group to bring into this community, is the development is family-centric. It's divided into three neighborhoods. You have traditional homes, estate homes, and ranch homes. The idea being that it allows people to move throughout the community as they age in place, starting out, not as starter homes, these are too expensive probably for starter homes, but starting out maybe as a second home in traditional, moving to estate. Then your children perhaps are ready to move into your estate home, and you relocate to the ranch homes. But unlike the homes that have been approved out in the county, they aren't restricted to over 55, because you have plenty of people that have kids out of high school or college who are empty nesters and ready to move down and downsize far before they're 55. So this is our plan, we request that you approve it, and I'll reserve the remainder of my time for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenzweig. Is there anybody else that would like to speak for this development? Okay, your time has been reserved. Now I'm going to allow anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this project to come forward. Please ensure that you state your name for the record.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Avery Jackson, I represent the Coweta County Water Authority. The Water Authority objects to the city and the applicant's specific condition that Noonan Utilities will serve water to this property after two years. This issue has already been decided by an arbitration panel and the Superior Court. Both the arbitration panel and the Superior Court made a requirement that if this annexation goes forward, it has to have the condition that the Coweta County Water Authority will provide water and sewer to the property. Georgia's annexation law now gives this council two options. It can either go forward with the arbitration panel's binding decision and annex the property with those conditions, or it can deny the annexation. Those are the only two options. It can't now at this time introduce new conditions that were never proposed before the arbitration panel or the Superior Court. The courts, or the arbitration panel ruled, and then the court ruled, and if people could just introduce new conditions after the entire process had already been gone through, then they would just wait until the process was over to introduce those conditions. Again, the arbitration process is meant to be binding on the parties, and if you go forward with the annexation, you must follow those conditions and no others. The Water Authority has a written contract with the applicant. It's an easement to provide a sewer line across the property, and part of that agreement is that the Water Authority also reserves sewer capacity for the applicant. The Water Authority has spent $3.5 million in reliance on that agreement. The Water Authority also has agreements with the city, where any customers of the Water Authority in annexed areas can remain customers of the Water Authority if those properties are annexed into the city. Also, the service delivery strategy agreement between all the local governments allows the Water Authority to serve properties in the city. Now, the Water Authority could have picked a different route for its water line, it could have negotiated with a different landowner, but it chose this route because it was a logical route to serve its other customers. But part of that agreement is that it will supply water and sewer to this property, and that's what the arbitration panel and the court decided. Now, the city and the applicant have argued that the county must approve of the Water Authority to serve this property. The county was a party to the binding arbitration. The county is bound by the same county is bound by the same arbitration conditions that the city and the applicant are. And the county argued in Superior Court in favor of those arbitration conditions, including the condition that the Water Authority will serve the property. The county's argued in favor of it, and they're bound by those conditions. Also, would like to just quickly state a due process objection to how the city is conducting this public hearing. On October 10th, the city had a work session where it received a presentation from the applicants where they provided evidence, an argument from the applicant and their attorney. It lasted for about an hour. The citizens here today are limited to ten or fifteen minutes, and that's unfair and not in accordance with due process. The zoning procedures of all of this state requires equal time to both the applicant and the opposition, and these citizens here today are entitled to that. Again, I'd ask that you remove the condition about Noonan Utilities applying water and sewer to the property or deny the rezoning and annexation request. Thank you.
And staff, how much time do we have?
Eleven twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
Before I begin my remarks, I have a point of order that relates to that.
If you could state your name for the record, please.
My name's Bob Ziffel. I live at 11 Heritage Trace in Noonan. But since the property owner and the developer had almost an hour to present their case during your work session, I would like to request just a little bit more time, not an hour, probably around 20, 25 minutes, for us to do a presentation of our case so that you likewise would have a full understanding of what our opposition position is, just as you understand or fully understand now what they had to say. So I'm requesting just the possibility of a few more minutes than the normal fifteen minutes that you would allow.
At the leisure of the council?
I would like our legal team to weigh in on that, please, on whether or not that is permissible.
I'm sorry, she just.
I said I would like our legal representation to weigh in on that request. Since he is talking about legal terms, I think our attorney should weigh in on that.
She'd ask for you to weigh in on the gentleman's request for additional time.
That's up to the board. That's strictly up to the board.
So I think as part of the confusion, if you.
But just as a clerk, catch me. Zoning procedure laws only requires one hearing. The zoning matter has already been a hearing before the planning commission. The council has opted in ordinance of providing for hearing for the planning commission and also for the council. What was held on the 10th was a work session, not a public hearing. So council is in compliance with this strict requirement of zoning procedure law. Now, as far as granting additional time for a presentation, that's solely up to the board to be able to, whether or not they can wait back and grant the additional time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If they have something specific that's going to take that long, but as far as somebody else standing up and say, you know, something with the same thing over and over, I don't see the point. But if they have a specific layout that's going to take 20 minutes, that's fine.
So if I could, Mr. Ziffel, is there a specific presentation you want to present?
Yes, I have a specific presentation that would take about 22 minutes for me to present, which is pretty much a summation. I've been asked by several people who are in attendance here to speak for them, to take their time if they wanted to.
Well, now, the other thing about it is, to me, if we give them the 22 minutes, we should give the presenter the same option if he wants to.
Yeah, whatever. To me, here's my, kind of my issue with it. In the, our work session, it was open to the public, although not for comment. So it was for a fact-finding mission, and no one attended that. So I have a little bit of a concern that you want to do it.
Excuse me a second. I hear murmuring in the crowd. We can't have that. Again, we're basing this on civility and respect. It's Councilman Gillem's opportunity to speak. Please allow him that opportunity.
So I'll continue with it. I have a little bit of an issue with it. However, if council agrees that we extend you, your presentation, if I understand you correctly, is going to take an additional 22 minutes in addition to the 15 allotted.
No, sir.
But can you clarify that, please?
My presentation would be 22 minutes, period, not in addition to the 15 minutes.
So you're going to take up the whole time?
No, if that's what the.
So and then we would have to, and I'm agreeing with Councilman Rhodes, is the fact that, then we'd extend that time to the applicant.
Well, see, if he's going to take the whole 22 minutes by himself, if everybody else says that's fine.
Okay.
It would be the 22 plus the five or so minutes that the Water Authority attorney took.
Right.
I'm fine. I'm fine with it.
As long as there's no one else wanting, wishing to speak against, but I see several hands.
You got other people that want to speak.
So you're taking the responsibility to speak for everyone in the room? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, I would assume so.
Okay. And they're all in agreement with that?
No, because there are people who have signed up on our list.
Well, that's what I'm saying.
They didn't agree to that, so.
Well, then, how is, how is that, how is that fair to those who are elsewhere attending? It's not.
All right, so let's get started. We can give them 20 minutes total. They've already taken about five, and let's go fifteen.
Let's get rolling.
Okay, so if we could extend the time to 20 minutes to each party, both the applicant and those opposed, just Mr. Ziffel, just be mindful, though, that five minutes are already taken. There are plenty of other people that would like to speak.
I understand.
Not to interrupt, but I would assume from what Mr. Jackson said, that technically the Water Authority is in favor of the application based upon his letter and comments he made. So he can go either way.
Well.
George, no.
And I see him shaking his head, no, so I would assume that he's in opposition, too,
correct?
And.
Very opposition to the new conditions.
If you could come up to the microphone, please.
He came up when you asked, was there anybody opposed? That's where the time should go.
The Water Authority is in opposition to the new conditions that are in the application that are being proposed by the city and the applicant.
All right, thank you for that clarity.
Sue Councilman.
So, council.
My suggestion is that, since we have taken some time already, that we stick with a 20-minute hard time for both sides, and that Mr. Ziffel not take up all of that time because there are people who have signed up and indicated that they would like their time. So please reduce your presentation to a lot less than 22 minutes.
Okay. I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Just one moment, please.
Just help me understand the total time allotted to each side so that I can run your clock.
Twenty, 20 minutes. Is that a?
Total time.
You're going to give.
Amicable, everybody.
Opposition 20 minutes, and I don't know how much time George used.
How much time? If they give them 20 minutes, how much time do they actually have left now?
He only used six minutes.
We spent 10 minutes talking about 20 minutes.
Opposition has 10 minutes.
We spent 20 minutes, 10 minutes talking about 20 minutes.
That's right. I just need a total time.
Are we resetting it completely to 20 is what we're asking, because we've already used almost five minutes.
That's, that's total on both sides, in my opinion, for me. That's 20 minutes total on each side.
Including what's already been used.
Already been used.
So what I'm understanding is that.
So you've got 15.
So everybody's agreement, a total of 20, and that's including the time that has already been used, both for.
So we've got about 15.
Yes.
15.
All right. All right, so Mr. Ziffel, the time, the clock is going, you've already had 20 minutes as the total amount of time because some of the, minus what the attorney has taken, plus allowing time for anybody else to speak against.
Okay.
How much time do we have left?
15 minutes and 18 seconds.
Okay. You have seven.
Okay. There have just been several things that were reported in Noonan Times Herald article that I think need to be addressed because they were pretty blatant misrepresentations of the facts that surround or the issues that surround this development and annexation. The first statement's about the 55-plus community. I don't know that this development, as far as I know, has never been presented as a 55-plus development. That requires the statutory requirements and regulations that have to be incorporated into the restrictive covenants and the deeds for that designation to be, for our property, our residential property. It's now, I've never heard that presented that way here. So to suggest that that's going to be the case, I don't, I don't understand how that, how that can be. The second issue was the issue about single-family housing shortage in Noonan. And we first heard that argument nine years ago when the owner of the adjacent property offered that as the principal justification for his attempt to get 120 acres rezoned and annexed into the city so it could be developed with higher density. If this is approved tonight, that adjacent property, which Pulte has an option to buy, will most certainly be requested for annexation and high-density development. So you're really talking about 284 acres and somewhere between 460 and 600 homes, which have been the numbers spoken about in the previous presentations about this particular development property. It's not 300 homes, it's a minimum of 460 because the other property has been discussed in terms of 160 homes. And yet, we've experienced this tremendous development in Noonan and Cahueta in this nine-year period of time since this first came up. And yet, despite that development, we've currently got about 2,000 new homes in various stages of construction. There are 114 homes being built now on older than a highway that will add directly to the congestion on 29 North and the Heron Road, Green Top Road travel corridor. In addition to that, there are approximately 1,400-plus homes that have been planned, approved, and could begin construction anytime, including 1,031 open lots in the Cahueta inventory. Add to that 502 townhomes and condos that are approved and under construction, and we've got 4,000 homes coming on the market in the coming year or two. In addition, there are 350 apartment homes being built out at Poplar Road, plus a reported additional 1,000-plus apartments that have already been approved by the city but have not yet been started. I don't know what you call a housing shortage, but it doesn't sound like we've got one here. Unless, of course, you're more concerned about all of the people who want to come here instead of the people who already live here. But regardless, do we, as a community, have some moral or ethical obligation to accommodate, facilitate, and subsidize the people who want to come here? Do we have to destroy our quality of life? Do we have to incur any untold amount of capital expenditure for infrastructure, et cetera, and taxation in order to prepare the way for them to meet their objectives, et cetera? I think not. I think that's the reason why we have land use plans, zoning ordinances, building restrictions, codes, et cetera, et cetera, is to, in fact, control and regulate the growth and development that we have. If we continue this unbridled, fast, uncontrolled development that's taking place, we're going to kill the very quality of life that these people are coming here to try to get. And it's going to kill it for us, too. We presumably have a government in both the city and the county and elected officials who are going to enforce those zoning ordinances and regulations in order to protect our community, in order to stop it from overdevelopment, from urban sprawl and blight. And who benefits from this development and annexation? No one. The city and the county don't benefit. We've heard the professional staff from both bodies state in previous hearings that this development is, at best, net neutral. And in reality, will, in all probability, be a net, of net negative fiscal value to either the city or the county. The citizens don't benefit from the increases in what we are going to experience in traffic ingestion and all of the other detriments that are associated with this high-density development. And I'm not against, and I don't think any of the people here are against, nor are the hundreds of people who have jammed into the venues where this issue has been heard over and over and over again. They're not against development of this property. In fact, if this property were going to be developed with the exact same density as the property, the average density in the three principal developments in that area, Lake Hills, Noonan Pines, and Heritage Hills, there wouldn't be a single word of opposition to it, not one. And what that represents is 247 homes on this combined property. That's what the density equivalent to what you have now. And that's a 40% increase over what RC calls for, Rural Conservation, which is what it is currently zoned as. It is not going to get a growth priority identification. That's a possibility for development. That's what growth development, or growth priority is all about. There's no guaranteed rezoning for it. So to talk about four additional units per acre is ridiculous. If that kind of density was possible, the county wouldn't have denied this three times. They wouldn't have taken it to arbitration. They wouldn't have been in Superior Court trying to stop it, if that was even possible. Let me just close by saying that the bottom line is that tonight, you five have got to decide whether or not this completely inappropriate development is going to be, which has been repeatedly denied and rejected, is going to go forward. You're going to reveal, but you're going to tell us a lot more than that, because you're going to reveal if you are finally going to stand up against out-of-control growth and development that is destroying the quality of life that we have in this county and city, the wonderful place that it's been. Or you're going to give in to the pressure and influence of one property owner and an out-of-town home builder who doesn't live here, who, when the development is built out, will take the profits and move on to some other place and project, who will not have to experience, suffer, or deal with any of the many negative impacts, detriments, harms, and financial burdens that this development will create for us citizens for a long time to come. You five are going to show us, if you respect our collective wisdom and will, with regards to what, how, and where growth and development should take place. Or you're going to decide that one property owner and a home builder from out of town know better than we do. You're going to clearly demonstrate if you believe that we citizens are capable of knowing what is in our best interest and the best interest of our community. Or you're going to think that one property owner and an out-of-town builder know better what we want and need.
Mr. Ziffel, just real fast, how much time do we have remaining?
You're going to tell us.
Six minutes remaining.
That you truly represent and serve us, or you will, and you will act in the benefit of the greater community. Or you serve the special interests and sole benefits of one property owner and a home builder from out of town at the expense of all of us citizens of both the city and the county. I trust that tonight you will make the decision to support the best interest of your constituents, the people who elected you to represent them, not the profit motive of a single property owner and the home builder from out of town. Thank you for your time.
Excuse me. We'll have no albers like that. Thank you. I just state your name for the record, please.
My name is John Moody, and if my time is running, I'm going to make this as brief as possible. As elective representatives, your duties are to protect, defend, and preserve the safety and culture and the quality of life of the current residents of this community. The cumulative, the culmination of nine years of adamant opposition to the annexation of Green Top Road now rests on your desk. Throughout those nine years, the only speakers that in favor of annexation have been the developer and the representing attorney. I have never heard one private citizen in favor of the annexation proposal, yet the opposition has filled the room. opposition has filled the room to beyond capacity at every and every single meeting and to include tonight. To be clear, no one here is against development on Green Top Road, so long as the property remains within the county's jurisdiction and subject to the ordinance of one home per acre. However, we are firmly against unrestricted development, which the city annexation would allow. Polte Homes and out-of-town developers stated at arbitration that this development would not be profitable if less than 366 homes was built. So that's the minimum units that we can expect if annexation is going to be approved, with no restrictions to deny additional units once the arbitration board's limit of 300 units expires in February 2025. Currently, Noonan Pines, Heritage Hills, and Lake Hills neighborhoods account for 408 homes on 470 acres. The proposed annexation, along with adjacent property, would constitute approximately 600 new units on only 280 acres. That's three times the increase from the current county ordinance. If the property owner was not the mayor, would a private citizen's request for annexation come before this council? The answer is no. The proposal smacks of political impropriety. Numerous base grievances have been asserted against annexation to include traffic, emergency response, hospital, and school system capacity, taxes, and quality of community way of life. To this date, Polte has only inadequately addressed the traffic issues. Polte's only traffic study determined an additional eight seconds would be required per new vehicle to traverse the current roundabouts between Highway 29, Howell Jones, and Green Top Road. Simply put, by Polte's own admission, an additional eight seconds per vehicle would increase the current average 34-second delay to a 42-second delay to pass through an intersection of three of the main arteries in Cauaeda County. Multiply that number by a proposed 500 to 1,000 vehicles, one or two vehicles per additional unit, and you are looking at a gridlock that has never been seen in Cauaeda County before. This issue alone overwhelms the current road infrastructure and exponentially compounds other issues. To maintain an egregious 42-second delay per vehicle due to the higher traffic volume will require road modifications with the bulk of an estimated $15 million to be paid and installed and maintained by the local taxpayers. With the only access to the proposed new city property residing solely within the county, city and fire police responsibly three to four times slower to respond respectively. Additionally, having spoken to the school district, an additional 366 to 600 new units would exceed the Northside Elementary and Madras Middle School's ability to absorb an additional 100 students at their current staffing and infrastructure capability. Though any development will impact this community, the cons definitely outweigh the pros when the totality of the effects of this annexation are evaluated. These issues were made so abundantly clear that your counterparts, the county commissioners, and the professionals of the city's own planning and zoning commission have unanimously rejected numerous times to consider recommendation to table this annexation. If the county will not, if the city will not take its own zoning and planning committee's recommendation and the county commissioners into consideration, what is the even point of having those boards?
One minute.
And summary of the question is simple: will this annexation of Green Top benefit or solve any problems for the city? The answer is no. So I ask you simply that this should not go forward.
Thank you. How much time remaining? Forty seconds.
Forty seconds. It won't take long, because this is it. If you vote for this--
If you could say your name for the record, please.
Richard Yancy, 42 College Street.
Thank you.
If you vote for this development, let me tell you how it's going to affect every one of these people sitting here tonight. It's going to be like death by a thousand pokes. Every day for the rest of our lives, every day when they get up, they're going to be stuck in traffic. Every day when they drive around, they're going to look at a development that is not Noonan. It will not enhance our community, it will make it worse. But good news, you have a choice. Listen to the people. Don't go home asking yourself, did I list the voters or the big company? You've got to do what's right. We know this is the wrong place for this development. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. All right, gentlemen, the committee came in late. If you could remove your hats, please, for the decorum of the body, please. Thank you.
Pat Burns, I've been in Noonan, Georgia--
Excuse me, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The 20 minutes has just expired, so all comments now for against, there's no more time for.
I'll go really quick.
No, ma'am, because that would not be then give the same amount of time to the--
Please vote responsibly. Thank you for your time.
Ma'am, you can sit down, please. Is there any rebuttal from the applicant? And how much time is remaining for the applicant?
Thirteen minutes and 41 seconds.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing myself with all the mumbling back here.
Thank you, I was just fixing to say, excuse me, excuse me, for the decorum again, please allow him the respect that everybody gave you as well.
On the first point, the water and sewer, you have an excellent city attorney who will advise you as to the law. There is no contract with the Water and Sewer Authority. There was an easement in return for sewer taps. They've never provided service to the property, and they have a contract with the county that says they can't provide service to annexed property. With regard to the property to the west, this is a tale that keeps being repeated. It is not part of this development. Polte does not have this property under contract. Polte does not have this contract under option. The point about the 55 development, that's out in the county. This is not age-restricted, it's age-targeted. It'll work for over 55, but as I said, there's plenty of people who become empty nesters and want to downsize much younger than 55. The issue with schools, enrollment is flattening in Cauaeda County. It'll eventually drop. It's dropped in other parts of the country. The new Noonan High School is being built to handle up to 3,000 students, which will be more than adequate capacity. But it seems like what these discussions always come down to is traffic and emotional statements about how bad the traffic is going to become. I'm about to get into the data, but let me just start with this point. The traffic that is already on those roads at those intersections is county traffic that's the result of approvals by Cauaeda County. We in Noonan are residents of the county, we pay county taxes, we have commissioners of roads who decide on road improvements. So if there's a complaint about current traffic, go to the commissioners. The city can't control current traffic. And the rule is you can't deny a rezoning based upon traffic that already exists. As I said, there is data, not emotion, but data based on actual traffic counts. As has been mentioned, at the worst intersection, at the worst time of day, the delay is eight seconds. As you go down the list, at other intersections, the delay is a second or two. But the worst intersection at the worst time of day is eight seconds. We ask that that be quantified in terms of what that actually meant in terms of cars. And in terms of cars going through the worst intersection at the worst time of day, you have about seven cars swinging out to the right to go toward developments such as Reagan Farms or Lake Redwine. Thirty-three cars going straight toward the Country Club or toward Lake Hills. That's about a car every 30 seconds being added. The traffic is coming, as you can see, from other improvements and other developments. Lake Redwine, when it's built out, and I should have said, I forgot, this is a traffic, these are traffic projections through 2028 for 366 homes. So actually, the traffic on these charts is about 18% too high. But Lake Redwine will be built out at 900 houses, three times our size. The Country Club has 212 units, but they also have social guests. So a lot of the traffic is coming from people that are here tonight that already purchased their properties with traffic that's been approved by Cauaeda County. We are only going to add minimally to the existing traffic. This slide shows the proposed mitigation, the right-turn lane that, according to the data on the previous slide, will improve the performance to a level of C, 16.8 seconds. And the amount of money we've proffered for traffic improvements based on the county's own numbers will more than cover that improvement. There was a question about public safety and a question about going on county roads for public safety purposes. This slide shows the distance from the nearest fire station, going the most direct route, about the same distance. In terms of police and fire comparing the distance to our development with the distance to the Parkside Villas, they're about 50% longer going down a county road to get there. And that's, as far as I know, a very safe development that hasn't had problems with police and fire service. Now, I'd like to spend the remainder of my time talking with you about one more issue. And that's this repeated statement that you should do what's best for the community and do the right thing. But deciding on that issue really depends on perspective, doesn't it? If you're someone that lives in the county, either because you've never lived in Noonan --
Seven minutes remaining.
--and rejected the county, rejected the city as a place to live to begin with, or maybe you lived in the city and decided to move to the county. For whatever reason, you didn't want what Noonan had to offer. You can see how, from that perspective, Noonan getting closer is a threat. You can also see how someone who is satisfied with what they have and are afraid that something new will upset their equilibrium, how they might view growth by city of Noonan and getting closer as a threat. But there's another way to view this development, and that's from the perspective of those of us who live in Noonan, vote in Noonan, serve in Noonan, and have created jobs in Noonan, and even more importantly, those of you who are elected to do the city's business. Because, mark my words, the city is a business, and just like all businesses, the cliche really holds true that if you aren't moving forward, you're moving backward. And one of the things that makes Noonan a great place to live is all of the smart, strategic growth decisions that you and your predecessors on council have made. The new ideas, the progress, the momentum, the activity, the vitality, the energy. You go downtown, Market Day, dine out Noonan, just about any time, day or night, the energy is palpable. But it's going to take action on Noonan's part to maintain that energy, to maintain that momentum, to keep Noonan moving forward. There was a time before Main Street and the forest side of Main Street that it looked like Noonan was headed toward being another Griffin or Grantville or Jonesboro or Greenville. Now rents are skyrocketing unbelievably for retail and restaurant space downtown. You cannot find a single-family home in Noonan. We have a tremendous housing shortage. This is an opportunity. We have a Fortune 500 company with an innovative, family-centric plan. Their motto is building communities, not houses. A beautifully landscaped, heavily buffered and bermed development, fully amenitized, 55-plus acres of open space, a place to live, work, and play in Noonan, and somewhere that you can age in place with people who have driving patterns that won't contribute as much as a normal development would to traffic problems. And you have a developer that's willing to pay its fair share of traffic infrastructure improvements based upon numbers provided by Cauaeda County. This is an opportunity to fulfill a need for single-family detached housing in Noonan with a quality, known developer who has an excellent product and has an excellent track So we're asking you tonight to embrace this opportunity. We're asking that you do the right thing for us in Noonan. We're asking that you grant the application to rezone after you have granted the annexation petition, and we're agreeable that these be subject to the 26 conditions from the arbitration panel, our proffered condition that they will all continue through the course of the development--
Two minutes.
--through the course of the development except for sewer. We're agreeable to the staff conditions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have a couple of minutes, what, about a minute or so remaining?
Minute forty-three.
Minute forty-three. Anybody else to speak for the applicant? Anybody to support the applicant? If not, at this time, I'm going to open up any questions from council.
Oh, this is the public hearing.
Okay, at this time, I'm closing the public hearing. And any questions from council?
Well, I have a few, but maybe not so many. But I don't want to go back and labor over what we did in the open, public work session. But I would like to clarify, get clarity on this subjective possible of 366 houses being built on their plus and the land that is next to it. I would like, can you address that, please? Because that seems to be something that's floating around. I would really like a solid answer on that.
Yes, sir. One of the things that I didn't mention, there will be a development agreement with the city also. And we're agreeable that there will be a maximum of 300 units, that that covenant will remain against the property. And once again, the property to the west is not under contract, it's not under option. That was an idea that was apparently floated by Cauaeda County to some of the residents, but it's not part of this deal.
Thank you. There's one thing that we keep coming to from the planning commission and also this, one of the points is on page 64 of our packet. And what I always find interesting in our discussions is the proposed capability-- And what I always find interesting in our discussions is the proposed capability and the purpose of the intent of the comprehensive plan. We did not influence or have any say into the county's comprehensive plan of priority, development, character areas. That's their plan, what they enacted, what they did. And they've also agreed that these are plans for comprehensive strategy growth. That's their language. And when I look at what has been proposed, I look at what has been in the hopper, and what has been actually broken ground. Some of those developments range from one point eight-five per acre, you go from two point seven-five per acre, most recent one, you go to ten point units per acre. So it seems to me, in the parameter of things, that this property, for example, falls at the lower side of the spectrum, of that range. So I, I mean, and these are not our words, this is the county's plan. So, that's one of the things that is kind of a, maybe, I don't know, a sticking point with me, but it's been really brought up to the point where we didn't have any say in this, and this is what's been done. As far as the traffic, as Mr. Roswick had said, we cannot deny, based upon traffic, we've all seen increase in traffic. I have some other questions, but I know Councilman Alexander, or anybody else have anything? Or we want to move forward?
I have one question for the applicant. There's three conditions that the city has requested for proffer. Are you all in agreeance with these three conditions?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
While I have you up there, and this is a question, I just received this letter today from this, from the Polte legal firm, I don't know if this better, could you just describe that in brief, what that's about?
Property owners in the state of Georgia have rights under the state and federal constitution. And that letter is asserting Polte's right, and the property owner's right, to due process of law in the actions of the city council tonight. The letter was drafted by someone other than me, but I did read it.
Okay, thank you. It just, it came in late, so I just wanted to get clarity on that. Thank you. Anybody else? Ms. Jenkins? Mr. Rhodes? I just have one, one question, I don't know if this is better, it's best by city staff, or by y'all. And to Mr. Guillaume's point, some of these other developments, and we've beat this horse, as someone said earlier, nine years, that's a long time. However, if the applicant chose to rezon this into either the county's high-density multi-housing zoning, or the city's RMH, which is the high-density, I think we're talking close to twelve units per acre, which, if it was apartments, would be close to two thousand apartments, one thousand nine hundred and sixty-three apartments, if my math is correct. Again, that's vastly higher than three hundred homes. It's kind of a choice. Three hundred owned, you know, fee simple homes are potentially up to almost two thousand Anything else, Mr. Guillaume?
Maybe not so much a question as a comment. With regards to the, the housing shortage, if we are, we've had study after study that has indicated we're short on housing, and we're actually still catching up as to what is really going to be needed as we move in the future. Not only is it in the city of Noonan, this is a nationwide issue, from city to city, trying to find affordable housing, trying to find housing for people who actually want to live in a house and have the opportunity for homeownership, and whatever tier they choose, whatever quality of life that they want. So, what we're looking at is studies that we've had, thick studies, by the, by the way, and from multiple companies, that are very reputable as to projections, and what do we want our communities to look like. So that's really the, the only thing, and that's, we have to take all those things into consideration, as well as the facts of the matter, and move, and stay on the facts, and say, where do we want to be as a community? Couldn't agree more. Noon is a great place, people are attracted here, and they want to come here. So we can do our best to grow together in many respects, or we can choose to just kind of go status quo, so to speak. That's really all I want to say. And I'm ready to...
All right. At this point, there's no, no further discussion. I'll take a, a motion and consideration of the ordinances.
Wait a minute, don't we have to accept the Planning Commission's report?
Yes. So I'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we accept the Planning Commission's report.
Second.
All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, just to make sure, I think Tracy did mention this, I think as part of that report, made it into the original August eighth, twenty twenty-three letter, which I think we're all familiar with, Captain, or the sewer authority, that he made sure that's a part of the record, also, along with this recent letter of October twenty-third, from Captain, on behalf of Captain, or the sewer authority, made it part of the record, and then, of course, it's been mentioned twice in the constitutional letter, that we proceed to date also, just as part of the record.
All right, thank you.
I'll make that motion, that the three letters that council described, that that's part of the record.
Second.
Have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Aye. That motion passes as well. All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for the, to consider the ordinances, the ordinance for annexation.
So I would like to move that we adopt the ordinance annexing the Green Top Road LLC property, subject to the general conditions, conditions from the arbitration process, and conditions proffered by the applicant as set out in the ordinance.
I do have a question.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Go ahead.
I need to have a second first, before we can have a discussion.
You have to have a second before you can have a question.
Right.
So he made a motion, there's a motion...
You want to make the second?
Go ahead.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Now, any discussion?
Yes. Does that include, Mr. Guillaume, the three proffered conditions by staff? There were four proffered conditions by the applicant, twenty by the arbitrator, but I'm asking...
Those are identified as the general conditions.
Okay. Understand. Thank you, council. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
All right, motion passes. Three, one. All right, I'll take...
Four, one, four, one.
I'm sorry, four, one. I'll entertain a motion to, for the zoning.
So I move that we adopt the ordinance of rezoning the Green Top Road LLC property, subject to the general conditions, conditions from the arbitration process, and the conditions proffered by the applicant as set out in the ordinance.
Second.
Okay, there's a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Nay.
All right, motion passed again, four, one. Motion carried. Thank you. And now, for the remaining of the agenda. If you're exiting, please exit quietly, because we still have business to conduct. This is a motion to close the streets for a twenty twenty-four Rock and Road Festival.
That particular request is being redraw for the night, and replaced on the following agenda.
Yep, all right. I was going to make mention of that. I'll give, I'll give you all a moment to exit, please.
Do we have anything else? Do we have an executive session?
Yes.
He was not happy.
Sarah. Sarah. Francie. Hey, did y'all drive? Did y'all all drive, or you got parents coming? Everybody drove?
I drove, she drove.
Okay. Wait for some of this to clear out.
All right. Here's that most folks have already left. We continue on with our agenda. This was... As, as Mr. Phillips had stated, Mr. Dohan has requested this item be removed from tonight's agenda, placed on the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three agenda. Can I have a motion on that?
So moved.
Second? It's just to, it's just to place it on the next agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, they just got, we, there's some reasons they want to move it to the next week, two weeks from now.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, George.
Okay.
I already made the motion.
Second.
There we go. All right. Any other discussion? There was some scheduling and other things that came up. All right. Any, any other discussion?
Yeah, I want to say one thing to our youth council. Y'all already saw a good meeting, because you don't normally get that much activity in our meeting. And the Roberts Rules of Order apply, and Dustin did a good job of controlling the crowd, because you get some loud people in here, and it's really no fun. We sit up here, I have two first cousins out there, I have some other cousins, a lot of friends, and they're sitting there, and you remember this, I mean, we're looking for the city, we're looking after the city, we're not looking after the county. And we're sorry that they don't like what we do, but we're talking about the city, that's what we're, we're looking after. So that's our job, is to apply for the city. So just remember that when you hear things, I don't know whether y'all live in the city or county, but, I mean, it doesn't really matter, but it's a, it's a point of order that is, we look after the city. And if those people live in the county, that's fine, that's what they choose. But they'd sit there and talk about us, well, they're, they're not.
All right. Eric, can we get a motion, Eric, we have a motion and a second, to move this agenda item to the November fourteenth meeting.
I'm sorry, Justin, I thought we were through with that.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign. Motion carries. All right. And we do have a need to enter into executive session for legal purposes, Mr. Alexander.
Did you go for the closed streets for the, oh, I'm sorry.
That was, that's what we just voted on.
Let me read this real quick.
Try and keep up, George.
I move that we now enter into closed session as allowed by OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash four, and pursuant to advice by the city attorney, for the purpose of discussing legal, and that we, in our open session, adopt a resolution authorizing directing the mayor or presiding officer to execute an affidavit in compliance with OCGA fifty dash fourteen dash four, and that this body ratified the actions of the council taken in a closed session, and confirmed that the subject matters of the closed session were within exceptions permitted by the open meetings law.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes.
Good job, guys. You're my person, I apologize. You're doing good.
Do the good...